...and then proceed with some business before we actually get into the body of the meeting because of some late developments. I apologize if I sound a little nasally, but there's a couple things you can expect when the winter hits, and that's snow and ice and illness. And I've been down ill for a few days, and I'm able to come to the meeting, but if I seem to be floating a little bit, it's because of the medicine. It's not because the chair is too rocky. We also have some members of the school committee that are ill this evening and will not be able to make it as well. But I will convene the meeting, and if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The reason I'm convening the meeting this evening, calling it to order, is that our chairman, John Howard, has resigned recently from the Board of Education. John has sent a letter to the respective town officials in the town of East Brookfield, as is required, both under the law, the regional school agreement, and school committee policy. Normally, when the chairman of the committee resigns, for whatever purpose, and in this instance, Mr. Howard has changed his residence from, or he has moved, I should say, I think he's in the process of changing the legal residence, but he has moved out of East Brookfield into the town of Spencer. And that presents an issue of whether he still is able to maintain his seat on the school committee number one, let alone chairmanship. But John has chosen, rather than create an issue over that, he has submitted his letter of resignation, effective, I believe it was, on January 6th. Normally, when the chairman of the committee resigns, the follow-up meeting, in terms of convening it and chairing the meeting, would normally defer to the vice chair, and in that case, it's Mary Gershman, but Mary is ill this evening as well and will not be able to fulfill those duties. The next step on that, in my judgment, would be that I would open the floor for nominations to chair the meeting for the evening until such time as the vice chair is able to come back to assume those responsibilities. But in a further reading by one of the committee members that would like to bring it to the attention of the rest of the committee, rather than handle it that way, there may be an alternate way that he would suggest. So with that, given that we need to have a chair officially for the meeting, I will open it up to the committee for any further discussion and our nominations for chairman for the evening's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, according to the School Committee Policy Manual, file BDA, it says "School Committee Organizational Meeting." And it's a short page, so I'm going to read the entire page. "For the purpose of organizing, the school committee, at its first regular meeting, following the town's annual elections, will elect from its membership a chairman and a vice chairman, both of whom will hold their respective offices for a term of one year, or until a successor is elected. A majority of the members of the school committee will constitute a quorum. The election will proceed as follows: One, nominations from the floor of chairman will be made from the floor," and I'm reading this verbatim. "The chairman will be elected by a majority roll-call vote of the members present and voting. If no nominees receive a majority vote, the election will be declared null and void, and nominations will be reopened. Two, upon election, the new chairman will preside, calling for the election of a vice chairman and secretary in order. The procedure used for the election will be the same as that for the electing the chairman." Next paragraph. "Any vacancy among the officers occurring between organizational meetings will be filled by a member elected by the school committee. The election will be conducted as described above. Following election of officers at its organizational meeting, the school committee may proceed into such regular or special business as scheduled on the agenda." Therefore, Mr. Chairman, we have a vacancy of an officer, and it suggests, in our bylaws, that we fill that vacancy for the remainder of the term, not for an evening. And in such, I nominate Kevin Hayes as chairman.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Hayes who's serving as chairman, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Mr. Chairman, Kevin Hayes.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you to my fellow committee members that are here. What I know about intellectual or political honesty, if I know of it at all, from my past experiences, has been the truth usually lies somewhere in the middle. And for the next few months, as I chair this committee, we will be searching for that truth somewhere in the middle, not too far to the left, not too far to the right, but where the truth brings us. We'll have some changes under the new chairmanship. We will be meeting on a bi-weekly basis. I will have a packet for all the members within the next week. You'll all have copies of the policy manual, that is the manual for the school committee to be operating by, and you'll also have a set of procedures and protocols that the chair will follow in the conduction of business for the public meetings and for information and questions that we need to have answered in between meetings. Having said that, I'll update all the rest of yous at the next meeting. For now, we'll move on with the remainder of the meeting tonight. The first item on the agenda would be student reports, high school Knox Trail, Wyre Village. We have students here. If you'd come up to the mic, please. Just give us your name and...
Hello and good evening. My name's Alicia Fogarski, and I'm a freshman at Proudty. So first, final exams are being held the 15th and 16th, and the 15th will be for periods one and two, and the second day will be for three and four. And of course, if there is a delay, it'll be held in the afternoon, and if there is a snow day, they will be held the following day. Thanks to the hard work of Mrs. Ford and coordinating with Quincy Memorial Community College, David Proudty will be running a three-credit class to be eligible to eligible seniors beginning in January after school. The class is called O R T 110 Strategies for College and Career. It is intended for first-time college students who want success and dictation in their college experience. They will gain practical skills that are directly applied to the selection of a college, major, and future career paths. Students also gain effective learning strategies and information on how to navigate and use college procedures and using resources. Specific topics include promoting self-knowledge through assessments, researching and obtaining career information, developing and practicing in time management skills, and improving communication decision-making skills. Students integrate information about self-careers and colleges in academic career plan. Students can apply this in class for both David Proudty and college credit. Winter sports are underway. We continue to see larger numbers of students involved in sports, and this is a direct result of school committee's action to end user fees. We are working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to increase our school's breakfast participation by 35 percent. We will be competing for awards and prizes from January 2013 to December 2014. The Department of Education will also offer eligible for grant, will also offer schools' technical assistant to help improve their breakfast participation, and we may be eligible for grant funding. Presently, only 7 percent of students are receiving free or reduced lunch to eat breakfast at school. Students, teachers, and cafeteria staff are working hard to develop creative ideas to improve nutrition, especially starting the day with a healthy breakfast. By providing more students with the opportunity to eat breakfast at school, research confirms that students have a better attendance, are less tardy, are able to concentrate, perform academically higher test scores and grades, especially when eaten close to testing time, make fewer visits to the school nurse, and have fewer dysentery problems. In a school-wide collaborative project, the David Proudty School Student Body has constructed a Christmas float for the fifth annual Spencer Festival of Lights, paired, held on December 14th, 2013. From concept to creation in just over a week, the students put together the Island of Misfit Toys and won first prize at the parade. The student body then donated the $300 prize money to the local Toys for Tots fund. We would like to thank Mr. Wayne Fritz for providing the trailer and driving the float, and to Mr. and Mrs. Donald Bertham for organizing this wonderful Christmas event. Also, the National Honor Society has instituted the Panther of the Month to recognize students who go the extra mile in keeping Proudty a happy and safe place to learn. December award winners were Stephen Bean and Samantha LaPrada, and January's recipients are Tom Parsons, Alexis Hammond, and Jacob Tibbetts, but they don't know yet till tomorrow, so shh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brendan DeKoff, and I'm the vice president of the Knox Trail National Junior Honor Society. On December 20th, we had our annual holiday band concert and sing-off. The peer leaders held a food drive, 856 items were collected and donated to our local food pantry. The peer leaders also volunteered at Lake Street School to help with their Santa breakfast. We'll be having a laser show on January 23rd. The theme is anti-bullying. The Knox Trail Parents Group is sponsoring this event. We are also excited to have the grade six students from East Brookfield Elementary will be joining us. Map testing will begin on January 13th. Finally, Maggie Paul and William Demarsky have been chosen to be the Project 351 ambassadors representing Knox Trail. This service and youth leadership project was started four years ago by Governor Patrick, based on the quote, "Everybody can be great because everybody can serve." Thank you.
Members of the school committee and guests, my name is Joey Bertham. Ever since I started here at Wyre Village School, I had wanted to be a peer leader. A peer leader is a fourth or fifth grade student who is willing to volunteer their time at school or for the community. To be a peer leader, fourth or fifth grade students needed to apply by writing why they wanted to be a peer leader, what qualities that student has that would make them a good peer leader, and they had to get their parent and teacher's signatures. Thirty-eight grade five students and 33 grade four students were chosen.
Hello, my name is Julia Conde. At Wyre Village School, the peer leaders help out with collecting Capri Sun pouches and box tops for education. So far this year, the peer leaders held a food drive and collected items for Mary Queen of the Rosary Food Pantry. During Parents' Night, peer leaders were available as greeters to escort parents to classrooms, to serve baked goods and beverages, to collect for the pennies for the Philippines, and to show our scarecrow exhibit to parents where they could vote for their favorite. Also, as we approached the holiday, our school became very busy. We made a wreath, over 200 hands, to show students who had been doing, seen doing something good during our days of December. The peer leaders held a candy cane fundraiser, which was very successful. Also, we collected over 800 rainbow loom bracelets to give to children who were in the hospital
Hi, my name is Larissa McDonald. We would like to thank you for allowing us to speak to you tonight. We have many future plans and hope to be back to report them to you later in the spring. Thank you.
Well, you all did a terrific job, and we're very proud of each and every one of yous. The next item on the agenda is teacher association reports. Are there any reports, Mr. James?
There we go. What a change. Good evening, Happy New Year, and congratulations, Chairman Hayes.
Thank you.
I noticed that on your agenda, you're going to be deliberating tonight on the issue of whether or not to send eighth-grade students to Bay Path for an orientation day. That was discontinued last year, and I think you're going to be deliberating on that. What I'd like to do is just provide some information for you to help you better deliberate on this, a little background information. And then I'm going to, on behalf of the teachers and the association, just weigh in very slightly concerning this, okay? A little history on this is, last year, we had two standing ad hoc subcommittees that were composed of teachers, administrators, and parents, okay? I believe they were called the Education Subcommittee and the Policy and Planning Subcommittee. Both, I believe, subcommittees did deal with the issue of whether or not to continue utilizing that orientation day. And the central issue was whether or not this was a good use of district resources, okay? Both subcommittees overwhelmingly, if not unanimously, agreed that this was not the best use of school district resources. There were a number of different reasons, you know, everywhere from students would be going there, all the students would be going there, taking 180th of a school day to do this. It involved some financial costs in transportation, and students there were not going to be seeing a working school in progress during this time because the Bay Path would be on a release day. The major decision-makers on this, the parents, were also not present during this. So all those kinds of issues came up. The findings, or at least the sentiments of the subcommittees, were brought to the full committee, and I believe the full committee unanimously agreed to discontinue this process. So just weighing in a little bit on this, slightly, the teachers and the teachers' association do believe that this is not the best use of school district resources. And, you know, we hope that the policy continues so that we can keep our kids in our district here to be educated as much as possible for the 180 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, the next item on the agenda is secretaries' reports. You all have a copy.
Hearing for visitors.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hearing for visitors. Any visitors that would like to, yes, come? Please just state your name for the record.
Certainly. Bob Parsons from Knox Trail Road in East Brookfield. I just want to bring it to the committee's attention. My children both go to the high school, and they've been both taking this CPR and first aid class at the high school level, which I thought was a great idea. I've been in public safety for 30-plus years now. I've been a CPR instructor for greater than 25 years. The other evening, when my son came to me and suggested that he needed $27 for a CPR card, I was kind of taken a little bit back, because every time I've taught a CPR class, which I actually teach to coaches for the high school level and junior high, it's $7.50 for the American Heart Association. So as I quizzed him a little bit more, what's going on, you know, why is it $27? He said, well, it's a first aid class as well through the American Red Cross. As we get into it a little bit more, I said, okay, if you learn one person, two-person CPR, they've done one person with AED, they did child, they did inf, they did choke, but no two-person CPR. So what did you do for first aid? We learned how to put a sling on someone. So you learned how to put a sling on someone, that's the extent of the first aid. That's it. And we watched some videos. So what do you mean by videos? Well, we've been, since the beginning of December, we watched 50 First Dates, Avatar, Sandlot, Skyfall. He said, excuse me? We're sending you to a school for the CPR class, and one of them goes, we stopped that weeks ago. So figuring it out, they had 90 minutes a day, they're seen as class five days a week for 10 weeks, so it was 75 hours for this class that they've been taking. I contacted the American Red Cross. The student CPR first aid class they teach is two and a half hours long. I teach professional rescuer CPR for paramedics and police officers, it's four and a half hours long. They couldn't understand how they were doing a 75-hour course. Even the most strenuous class they have that touches every bit of first aid is only 30 hours long. I just have a concern with this, because both my kids are now saying, Dad, it's an absolute waste of time for me to go to school if all we're going to do is watch videos. And I bring this to your attention because this is the type of class, I don't know who's, I believe it's a gym teacher, a teacher, it's only a half-credit class, but this is the type of thing that I hear from my kids that make me not want to support the school system as much as I want to. I really want a first-class school system. I think you do have some excellent instructors and teachers, but it's one of these things that, I don't want to send my kids to school every day to go watch a movie. And I do realize there are some downtimes, but this is since the beginning of December, and they're still in this class, they're still seeing other things. Now, if they took a national registered EMT course, that's 150 hours. Maybe if we double this class, get a full credit, we can get an EMT out of it. Even through the American Red Clat, excuse me, Red Cross, their certified nursing assistant program is only 126 hours. I don't know how we're teaching CPR and first aid to these kids at 75 hours, and they're not learning it. They're not learning first aid, at least. They did learn some CPR. I would rather see them, if they're going to do this course, teach them more information in regards to first aid, you know, that full 30-hour course that the Red Cross has. And by the way, when we checked with the Red Cross, they do not charge for their cards for students through this program, so I don't know where that $27 is coming from. We teach through the fire department, we teach a firefighter 1-2 program, that's 300 hours long, 1,000-plus-page book that they receive, they have to have, maintain a 70 average, it's a college-grade class, college-level class, with certified teachers from the National Pro Board Fire Service Board of Instructors, that I know I proposed to Mr. Bayshant this year, that we were told that we couldn't provide to the, try to get some seniors involved, 18-years-old, into the fire service this year, but we're trying to get someone involved for at least a credit hour course. Maybe do it that way, because I know Quablog has done that in the past, and I was told our instructors weren't certified teachers, so they really couldn't teach it, even though we are pro board certified. But I could do a better job doing this CPR class than for 75 hours. It should be maybe an afternoon class. I can't imagine having this be a full class. The whole reason why, one thing that I want to bring up to your attention as well is, my kids don't want me to be here tonight. I can tell you that. And I just want it to be said, they're afraid of repercussions in the school system. They're afraid because of who I am, that some teachers may say something to them, because things have been said in the past. And I can tell you now, if something is said after this, I'll be seeing you guys again, because that's not fair to the kids at school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Kurt.
I just want to, I just want to ask you, Superintendent, at the next meeting, would you give us a report for what Mr. Parsons just said, why it costs $27, and why it can't be $7 at the next meeting? Give us an updated report of how it started and the whole nine yards, we have a better handle on this. I'm concerned if it's $7, we're charging $27. This is a public thing for the students and anybody else who wants to take it, and I think it's absurd. And I won't stand for any trashing of students that, in the school, that speaking up. It's not acceptable. I just want to go back to what Mr. James says. I did vote not to stop.
Mr. Naikus, if you would, we're getting off track here. We'll have an opportunity at the end of the agenda to add items to the agenda and things that we want to discuss, but we're going to attempt not to...
Okay, fine.
...from the items as we go.
Fine.
Are there any other citizens that would like to speak? Okay, thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
With all due respect to the gentleman's issues and concerns, and to what Kurt had just said, we'd be more than happy to, but I would ask, the proper procedure in this is that the committee would vote to defer the issue to administration to come back with the report, rather than just the individual request. It's just a matter of proper protocol, and we'd be happy to do that and investigate.
We'll entertain that before the end of the agenda, items to be discussed. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. The next item on the report is secretary's report. You all have a copy of the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of December 10th, 2013. If anybody has any corrections or changes, if not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. The next item is to approve and retain the minutes of executive session of December 10th, 2013. Are there any changes or questions in regards to those minutes? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. The next item on the agenda is the financial report, approval of the expenditure report of December 31st, 2013. Electronically, these were sent out to us last week, and copies were also given to us tonight. Any members have any questions that they would like to ask?
Mr. Chairman.
Kurt.
I just have a question to Superintendent, I guess it's under his administration, 1,000, 1210 Superintendent's Office. We have a balance of $38. What is this a sign of? Are we getting down to a zero with these accounts, or how come it's just $38?
I'm going to ask Julie to pick that up, if you don't mind, and explain that better.
That's because, if you look in the encumbrance column, the remainder of the salary that we're anticipating is being encumbered for the year. So we feel that $38 is actually not being spent, but we are planning on spending up to that $38.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I just happened to see a bunch of other ones, department heads, $80, it just goes down the line. The best one was medical professional development, $1. No, it says textbooks, I'm sorry, textbooks, 2410, $1. I just find that this is, this isn't a good idea to...
Can I clarify for a minute?
Sure.
The way we're doing the encumbrance is that we're trying to show that this money is all planned for. We haven't spent it, but it is planned for. We don't have any excess left. We haven't spent it yet in the cases where it's under the encumbrance, but...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Is that it, Kurt?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else with any questions in regards to the expenditure report?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludia.
On the last page, page 12, Julie, if you could explain the school choice account, and there's two accounts here. One is school choice regular ed, and one is charter school regular ed.
Okay. So in December, the Department of Ed always sends us basically the true-up of the school choice and charter numbers. So I put in the graph that came from the Department of Ed as well, that shows, the cherry sheet was based off of FY13 numbers, and now, based on the actual FY14 numbers that came out in December, we're now sending out 16 more students than last year, and 23 less students are coming in. That's leaving us with about $169,000 that we're now going to have to make up because of additional expense for all of these kids leaving the district. So at this point, you're seeing a deficit in those two lines. Myself and the superintendent have, are working out the plan of how we're going to cover that. We have a few options, minimal, but we're... We have a few options, minimal, but we're working out exactly how we will cover those.
When will we know what that plan is?
We should be doing the transfers for the next expenditure report.
We're working on it now. We're just not comfortable going forward to say that, or to recommend to the committee that this is the course of action to pursue. Things change, obviously, and I'll mention it further later on with respect to the FY fourteen budget update, but this was unforeseen. It's, you know, a curve coming out of left field to us, but I'll comment more on that. But to Julie's point, she's identified it here with respect to what happened, particularly, I'm sure the committee understands it fairly well, but I want the public to understand it, that typically when budgets are prepared many, many months ago, all school districts do the best they can based on estimated revenue that will be coming forward from the state. And the big thing that we look for is what we call the cherry sheet numbers, and all communities do do that. But it's only a leap of faith at that point in time that all those revenues that are identified will be actually received, but everyone goes forward and makes their plan. And then we're halfway into the year here and find out that the state does a switcheroo on the numbers, legitimately so because of what they do on their data gathering to see who's coming into the district, who's leaving, but ultimately, they make the adjustment. And we, along with every other school district, can either pick up a few dollars based on that or we can lose. In this instance here, it's a negative impact on the budget of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that we do not have. If you've been following the story here for months, back to the springtime, and eventually the setting of the FY fourteen budget by the Commissioner of Education, there is no wiggle room within this budget to offset this negative impact. Under typical circumstances with school districts, most school districts do have a little bit of play, do have a little bit of wiggle in the event that the numbers change. But because of the serious reductions that we've had to go back and do a number of times, right up to the point where the Commissioner set the budget figure in December, even after that, we have this card dealt to us. So right now, I can't tell you where the one sixty-nine is going to come from, but Julie, myself, and the staff in the office are going through, and it simply means that whatever else was left in other areas, if we thought that we were fairly well at bare bones, we're probably into the bone now, and we will be ready at the next meeting to identify what we would recommend in order to meet that because we will have to adjust for it, and we will have to send it back to the Commissioner for his ultimate approval, even though the Commissioner representing the state is the one that has done it to us. They've changed the numbers, rightly so, but how could you plan your own budget at home and then find six months into your operation that what you legitimately anticipated, all of a sudden, the rug is pulled out from underneath you? So it is not a good position to be in. We will meet the challenge, and we'll come forward with those recommendations at the next meeting such that the committee can act, and then we can so notify the Commissioner for his final approval.
Thank you.
Yours, Ted.
Yeah.
Ted, is it typically, is this the time that the state makes their adjustment?
Yes.
It always is.
Yes. Mm-hmm. And just parenthetically with that, we know now that we're getting into FY fifteen budget season, and we'll be talking a little bit about that this evening, that it's around about this time, the end of January, where the Governor will submit his budget, and the state will come forward with some guesstimates of what revenue would be, and we're back in the same boat again, where we will develop our budget based on those guesstimates, and we could be in a similar situation this time in the FY fifteen year, but it's standard practice of how the state operates.
Thank you, Ted. Next item under unfinished business, curriculum report from the DSAC update.
All right. As the committee is aware, the final report from DSAC, and I hate to use these acronyms, but DSAC refers to a portion of the State Department of Education that we call DESI, and that stands for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. DSAC is a section of the larger State Department of Education, and that stands for the District and School Accountability Center, and then it switches over to District and School Assistance Center. Now, if you go back in time, I believe it was back in May or June of last year, there was a review team sent out by the Department of Education under this umbrella of DSAC, and they reviewed the school district from top to bottom in a number of areas. They then put together a report that unfortunately does take an inordinate amount of time, but they did complete their task. And back in November, early December, they sent a preliminary report, a draft, I should say, of that report to me for commentary, which I did make, and then sent it back to them. They've since revised it, and now they have sent out a final report, and now it's ready for district consumption and public consumption. We did forward the report on to the school committee. We will be placing it on our website for those that are interested in reading that material. But now comes the, I think, the good part. The report itself is fairly critical of the school district and a number of the variables, but I don't take that as a slap on the wrist, so to speak. I take it as an objective, neutral body of professionals that come out and look at a school district with some fair amount of detail, and then make some commentary on it and make some recommendations. If we're wise, I believe that if we step up to those recommendations and obviously select the ones that we think are appropriate, that will fit, and that there is something that we can do about those recommendations to improve our district, then I think it can be a win-win situation. But I think the initial reaction will be fairly critical and negative, and I don't want people to stop there because, to me, having gone through this before, it can be a very positive learning experience and helpful as the district pulls together to say, where do we want to be in two, three, five years from now? Now, specifically with the DSAC most current, they have sent out the report. They will be coming out as a team led by their Associate Commissioner, Dr. Ava Mitchell, a team of professionals from the DSAC center will come out on, I believe it's January twenty-three, to review the report with the administrative team and other members, including association members, teachers, various staff members, to get, first of all, the presentation of the report summarized, but then also to get our reaction. And the intent of the meeting is, as it is called, next steps. What are the next steps that we collectively as a district and the Department of Education through their DSAC professionals, what are the next steps that we believe are important that this district can address to start to make improvements? So that'll be happening on the twenty-third of January. A follow-up to that will be most likely at the February school committee meeting. If we end up with some additional meetings and subject to our schedule and subject to the Department of Ed's schedule of their availability of people, we might be able to get them out earlier. But for all intents and purposes, it probably will be at the February meeting where they will come out and present to the school committee, the public, obviously, and hopefully those that are interested, excuse me, will have read the report by that time on our website. In addition to that, the DSAC group has been working with us right from the summertime. If you recall, I brought forward to the school committee some initiatives that we were involved in immediately through the curriculum work that the DSAC folks were sponsoring at Bridgewater State College. We've stayed in touch with them, the folks at DSAC, to come out to work with us and provide people resources and material resources, if you will, to help us in a number of areas of our curriculum development. We have had them come out to individual buildings and do walkthroughs and meet with staff, gathering data, but also eventually to come forward to help us with our improvement plan. In January, and I believe it's January seventeen, we have a professional development day where it will primarily be on curriculum for the majority of staff, and we will have the assistance of the DSAC people. The biggest thing that we're involved in this year is called curriculum mapping, curriculum alignment, and pacing guides, developing pacing guides. If you recall, the organizational structure I put in place, we created a district curriculum committee called DCC. We also created building level teams, building leadership teams, if you will, BLT, and those groups are working feverishly to address this serious, serious issue we have here in curriculum and the need for curriculum development. So to the point, on January seventeen, the DSAC people will be coming out working with us, and we've targeted pre-K through eight as our major area of focus, primarily in the area of English Language Arts and Mathematics. At the high school level, because typically at the secondary level, they're more content-oriented, they're well into this arena, if you will, and they're going to be spending a little more time on developing their data teams and data analysis, how to go about interpreting the MCAS scores and other data that we have available, and then how that impacts on curriculum and instruction. So we have a number of things going despite the fact that we have not had the official involvement of the DSAC people, which will begin starting on the twenty-third, when they come out to meet with the administrative group and other staff members, and then eventually to the school committee in February. So I'm pleased that we haven't lost the six months waiting for the report, waiting for them to come out and deliver the report, and I'm also pleased with their cooperativeness to be able to come out to a district that really is looking at this as an opportunity to improve.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions for the superintendent in regards to that? If not, we'll go to the next item, which is the FY fourteen budget update, Ted.
Sure. As Julie had mentioned on the report, and then the curve that I mentioned of the hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, it's very troubling because I pretty well remember my comments throughout the budget process of FY fourteen. And in response to, I believe, questions from the audience whether the budget, once it got established and approved, whether it would be sustainable, whether we'd be able to get it done, if you will, for the fiscal year. And I hope you don't claim amnesia, but I said on multiple occasions that if we could call it a constant, that once the budget was approved, if everything was held constant, that there were no changes, that there were no external variables that came in that changed the picture, if you will, of what that budget finally was, that we would be in a pretty good position to ride out the year despite the negative impact that we all are going through by the reductions. So that was the word I used, that if everything were to stay constant, we may be able to eke by. And we know nothing stays constant, and even though we have put in a freeze on discretionary expenditures, there are other things that happen beyond our control that cause an impact to the budget. Case in point, the one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. We also had and continue to have some facility issues. Fortunately, wood here, metal over here, fortunately, we haven't had any serious impacts, but we've had some issues. We've had some heating issues up here at Wyer Village. We've had some leaks. I would term it as minor leaks where joints have given way at different connections and have caused some leaking. We've had an issue with our computer system that pretty much, you know, runs our heating operation, if you will, up here. We've had some heating issues at Lake Street School that needed our attention. Fortunately, it was nothing major. We have had some water issues recently at Lake Street School where we were leaking through the roof, obviously into ceilings and down through light fixtures onto the floor, that's going to need our attention. And I believe we have some leaking issues up at the high school because of an ongoing roof issue. So those things, I'm saying, have not been major, but we, to me, we've really just begun the winter. I mean, we've had some cold days, and yes, we've had some snow, but I'm anticipating some difficulties as we get into the end of January and February, and certainly February vacation is always of concern to any school district. So my point is that we may not be able to hold things constant. If we can only have, if we only have to deal with some of these blips in the radar, we still may be okay, but I don't want anyone to walk out of here saying, "By goodness, they're able to meet this reduction of the one sixty-nine." They'll be able to meet just about anything because that may not be the case. We could turn around this evening, tomorrow, the next day, and find out that we do have a major issue. I guess a year or so ago, you had a boiler issue in the district. Costs a lot of money when you start to, you know, look into a boiler. So right now, we're kind of crossing our fingers, toes, and whatever other good luck charms we have, but that's the message I want to present on FY fourteen. Despite all the things that we have done, and we're really at a bare-bones budget, we're crimping along. If we can get some more warm days rather than the cold days through the breadth and depth of the winter, we may make it, and unless there's some other catastrophic change that hits the district, we still could be within reach. And the last thing I'll say on it is, again, if you recall, that I've said on multiple occasions that I'm not going to rest comfortably until we get to the fourth quarter because the fourth quarter really will tell us whether we're within reach to be able to end the year with the balanced budget. So far, so good, despite some of these blips, but if you work and whatever you have at home, candles are lucky charms, I need everyone's help to get through this winter. So that's kind of where we're at with FY fourteen right now.
Any questions from members?
The chairman.
Yes, Vinnie.
Through you to the business manager. Julie, I'm going back to the last page of the expenditure report. It shows a budget balance, unencumbered funds of one point, just shy of one point four million. And it shows in the two columns that I spoke to, school choice, regular ed, and charter school, regular ed, approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand in deficit. Is that one sixty-nine in addition to that, or is that part of the one sixty-nine?
The one sixty-nine is being taken out of the one point three. Is that what you're asking?
Basically, yes. Is that, the one point three nine two?
Is the available money, and that, the one sixty-nine is being reduced from there.
That's going to be reduced by an additional one sixty-nine?
No, it's, that's included.
Oh, that is included in that number?
That is included because that's just the total, runs down.
Okay, thank you.
So if you added that back in, that's how much is really unencumbered.
Okay, so it's already reduced.
The majority of everything in this report that we know of has been encumbered. The big things like substitutes and things like that is where we still have money that's unencumbered, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure we're going to use that. Everything else that I know of, we've encumbered already.
You know, when you first started this whole process, and I know we're kind of going back to the, to this, but this is all part of the FY fourteen budget, when you first started this process and introduced us to this format, I didn't really like it. I didn't like the way it is, but actually now, it is helpful. It's much, it's much easier to read this way, to understand, you know, we're encumbering things that we know we're going to spend, and we're encumbering them at the beginning of the year, so we're not even thinking about we have available funds in that account, you know, halfway through the year when a crisis hits. So I do appreciate this report.
Any other questions, comments?
I would just like to make one other point because the committee is intimately involved in it, but. in it, but if you recall, when we got to the final budget figure, within a few days of that, the State Department of Education, through the commissioner's people, had requested of us, what would be potential liabilities that we could foresee that we have not currently budgeted for or reduced in the budget? And I identified on behalf of the district, with the committee's approval, upwards of $707,000 of additional potential liabilities, that if any one of them were to happen, we have no place to go but further reductions. And I put that out there very intentionally, because I didn't want everyone, once we got through the process, I didn't want everyone to sit back and say, well, okay, we got that done, we've dodged a bullet, so we'll just ride it out now for the rest of the year. Because as I say, if you cannot keep things constant, things will happen. But amid that $707,000, there were a number of liabilities relative to labor issues, some grievances and arbitrations pending with the Teachers Association, also a labor complaint that had been filed with the Department of Labor. But through the good work of the school committee and the association and open discussions, we've been able to come to a tentative resolution of those issues that substantially, substantially reduces that potential liability of $707,000. And the only things that I'm, only thing that I'm waiting for right now is the final approval from the Commissioner of Education. The association has gone along tentatively, the school committee has gone along, the people that I talked to at the Department of Ed and our financial overseer have tentatively agreed to it, but ultimately, the commissioner is the one that has to sign off. It's been in the hands of the commissioner for a few weeks. I understand we all have busy calendars, but I can't move forward until I get my answer. And that's, that's not meant as a criticism, it's just, you know, things are happening quickly here in the district. So I need that answer before I can make my next move on some of the other 700,000. But I want to compliment the process that was used and the understanding on both sides that ultimately, it's a cooperative venture, if you will, and given the circumstances of we're facing $707,000 potential that we don't have, anything that's legitimate and moral and legal that's going to reduce that, I think is a good thing to do. So I want to applaud both sides on that.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is contract with Rovik Hilliard for custodial supplies.
Right, I believe at the last committee meeting, there were some questions raised about that and that particular contract that had been let out. And the committee asked if we could pull out of it. There was a provision in the contract that said, no, we couldn't, but on behalf of the committee, I did approach the organization and send them a letter and explained the reasoning of why we would like to terminate that, and they have agreed. They've agreed verbally, and now I'm asking them to put it in writing, because the fellow that agreed to it may not be there 30, 60, 90 days down the road when we have to call that back in. So I'm going to ask them to put it into writing, but they understood the circumstances completely, and I think that's a good positive step in our path as well.
Okay. Any questions in regards to that from any of the members?
Chairman, I just want to say, job well done to superintendent for researching up that problem.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just in follow-up to that, so for the balance of the year, supplies will be purchased off the, what, state bid list?
Primarily, I'll let you talk on that. We're doing kind of a cost comparison on it, and if this group or any group can match what's on the state bid list, we have some battering power then?
Sure.
Julie, do you want to add to that?
At this point, I have been researching everyone on the state bid list and found that some of the prices are definitely a lot lower. One of the vendors is coming in next week to meet with me, so we can kind of work out how we're going to get the supplies from now the end of the year, but we will be buying off the state contract for the remainder of the year.
Very good.
Well, I just want to caution, and it's a soft caution, we have to be careful as we go forward before we start counting our savings, because when you start to change out on vendors that have supplied certain things like the racks and what have you, if we have to do any switcheroo's on that, there could be some upfront costs too, but we'll watch that and compare and contrast.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman.
Kurt? Just to get back to Julie, is this going to go back out to bid in June or July or May or what?
At that point, we can look into whether we want to go out for a formal bid or continue to use the state contract.
Formal bid, I guess, for supplies for a 15-year, right? You're going to put out for bid for a next year, a two-year contract, or are you going to stay with the state bid list?
We can make that decision at any time.
Okay, well, that's my question was, okay.
At this point, we need to get some historical data of what we really need, and I need to have some time to do that, but for now, we'll use the state contract, which should be the lowest pricing, because they go out and they research it, so, and we can look at that a little bit later, once we get some more data on what we need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, next item on the agenda is Bay Path Open House School Committee Policy. This was brought on the agenda by Mr. Cludia.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the comments that have been made on this already. I actually have spent a fair amount of time on this, and I certainly realize that in years past, there's been a fair amount of time spent on it as well. I wasn't privy to that, I wasn't on this committee at that time. I understand both sides of this. I spoke extensively with the superintendent of Bay Path, and I'm not quite sure what resources Mr. James was speaking about, because there's no cost to the district for this. Bay Path sends its buses at their cost to pick our students up, and they transport them free of charge. It's not one 180th of a school year, it is two and a half hours, and that two and a half hours includes transportation to Bay Path and from Bay Path. So it's one-third of a school day, or thereabouts. You know, we can kick this around till the cows come home. I thought long and hard about it. I think it's absolutely ridiculous that the school committee would have to go to the extent of setting a policy to get this accomplished. I just don't think that's the right thing to do. I think by common sense decision, we should be able to come to a decision on this. I understand that East Brookfield is not a member of the Bay Path district, I get that. East Brookfield, the town of East Brookfield certainly was approached by Bay Path to join that district. They chose of their own accord at that time not to join it, and, you know, I do know that Bay Path will accept no members to the school, no students to the school, unless you are a district member. They turn away as many students as they accept on an annual basis, they're full every single year. And I'll tell you, their success rate is good, as many kids that want, students that want to go on to continuing education through colleges and whatnot. This is not some other district that we're supporting. This is our district. This is, in fact, an extension of the Spencer School District, and I think we need to embrace it. I have spoken with the principal at Knox Trail, Joyce Nelson, and she has no qualms with sending the students, if that's what the committee would like to do. She understands that it's a two-and-a-half-hour procedure. She, you know, I did review my findings with her, because, you know, I don't want to be saying things that aren't accurate. I'm trying to deal with facts and accurate facts. And so by speaking to both her and John LaFlesh, you know, I think I've certainly received the facts. It's a very short overview for each trade. Although school is off that day at Bay Path, they bring in students, and there are students in every, well, most of the trades doing something of demonstration. I think it's a worthy investment of two-and-a-half hours. I think that I would like to see it left up to the administration, along with the principal of the school, to work out the details as to who would be allowed to go and how that would all work out. You know, I don't think the entire eighth-grade class has to go, I think those who applied to go should be allowed to go. On the other hand, kids will be kids, and I wouldn't want to see applications filled out by every member of the eighth-grade class just to get two-and-a-half hours out of education. I don't think that'd be appropriate either. Certainly, you know, it pains me to say this, but, you know, the students from East Brookfield would not be able to go, because there is no way they would be accepted into the school. Like I said, John said that if, in fact, there are any extra slots, the first, they're offered to the district member, the towns that are in it, that pay for it. You know, I think it's a great education, not every student is cut out to go to college, and we certainly need, you know, tradesmen, and they offer a great program. I graduated from a vocational school, and it did fine by me, and I was very, very grateful for that education. And, you know, I hold it in high regard, and I just think that it's a worthwhile thing for two-and-a-half hours. I think that, from what we've just heard from speakers this evening, I think there may be room in the educational school year to find two-and-a-half hours. So I would, rather than ask the superintendent to come back to us with a policy, I would just make a motion that we refer this to the administration and the principal at Knox Trail to work out the details and come back with what they feel is a viable plan on how we can accommodate this. That would be my motion.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Kurt?
I just want to go back and say what Mark James said on his report. I did vote to keep the kids that go to Bay Path at the high school when Dr. Nam was here, so it wasn't in the name of his vote, I did support it. There was pleas from the two Spencer representatives who sit on Bay Path School, and they are Spencer representatives, so we do have some input. And they were upset when Dr. Nam stopped them from going there. I just want to, at the same time, go back to what Mr. Cludia says, I fully support what he says, I don't want to rehash it, but I know students in South Spencer who went to Bay Path when it was available, and they both have a good education and they have a good trait. I see one's a plumber, one's a electrician, et cetera. So if that's what they want to do, they should be obliged to let them do it. Not everybody wants to go to college, like Mr. Cludia says, and these particular individuals don't want them, and they are out working and making a decent pay, supporting their families. So I'm all in favor of the students who do want to go there and get an education.
Thank you, Kurt. Any other comments? Chris?
Just a question, is that the only opportunity that these kids would be able to go to that open house?
To that particular one, yes, but to view the school as in general, no. I mean, there are many opportunities.
Okay.
They'd have many opportunities, Chris.
Just one other question, when you went to your voc school, did you go visit with your parents, or did you go by yourself?
Testing my memory. I honestly don't recall. It's a long time ago, Chris. I don't recall.
Okay.
And I understand that, and, you know, I would imagine, Chris, that there would be some parents that wouldn't necessarily want their children or their students to go to the school without them. And that's fine, and I'm sure through permission slips, et cetera, we can deal with that. You know, I believe I was told that, I want to say 41, I thought I had it written down, students were accepted this year. I believe that to be the right number. You know, I think that for the few hours that we're talking about, I think we're wasting more time talking about it than it's really worth. It's just my opinion. You know, somebody brought up to me in doing some of my research that, well, what happens if one of the, you know, schools, high schools, the, from Worcester, you know, St. John's or whatever, wants to do this? Well, the differentiation that I'm making is that we pay, the taxpayers in the town of Spencer, and the, you know, pay to be a member of the regional vocational school. We don't pay to be a member of any other regional district. So I think that's where I'm drawing the differentiation. And certainly, when the administration comes back, if I've missed something, if I don't have facts here, and there are resources that are being expended that I'm not bringing up, I certainly want to know what they are, if there's costs involved in this. Certainly, if we're sending students out of district, I understand we're sending teachers out of district, I get that. But we're not paying for busing, we're not paying for them to stop and, you know, have dinner, or lunch, I should say, and so. That's why I'd like them to see if there's a way we can accomplish this, rather than try to draft a policy. I think a policy is, you know, you shouldn't have to draft a policy for things like this. I think we should be able to come to a consensus. And I'm sure the prior board, I'm taking nothing away from their decision, they may well have come to a consensus. I don't particularly understand how they got to that, and I don't necessarily agree with it, so I'm challenging it. I guess that's where I'm at.
Any other questions, Chris?
That's fine.
I just want to say one, if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, for an example, is not going to Bay Path, we have two students from the town of Spencer who go to Smith Vocational School in North Hampton, I believe, and the town of Spencer pays something like $40,000 for busing, that's a mandate from the state. So the town has to pay for them for busing. So this is the opposite of belonging to a district when the busing's included and we are a member. And if, and those two students, I believe, who want to go there under school choice have a right to go, because David probably doesn't offer agricultural courses, so they have a right to go there. So it could go the other way, and we could be paying a lot more than what we're going to pay in this situation.
Thank you, Kurt. My own personal viewpoint, I agree with most of everything that has been said. I was a little concerned when this was first brought up, because there's 10 communities that are members of this district, and we were the only ones that our children didn't participate in. And I failed to be able to understand why Spencer is always different. I don't know why this works for the other nine towns that are in the district, but it doesn't work for Spencer. I don't know why the other nine towns have no problems or concerns about their kids going and getting this opportunity, but it's a problem for Spencer. I think we need to take a serious look at it, and as Vinnie said, providing it's not costing us anything, and we're not incurring any expense, superintendent can report back to us. The only thing that concerns me, Mr. Cludia, and I agree with your statements about doing it as a policy, the problem is, when this superintendent's gone and the next superintendent comes in and unilaterally decides, we're not going to do this anymore, we're going to be back to square one again. And the only way that we have any assurance that the kids are going to continue to have this opportunity is to have it set as a policy. But what I'm willing to do is let the superintendent administration report back to us, see what type of recommendation they can bring to us and how tight we can make it, and if it's sufficient, then I would be willing to support that. If not, I would ask that we look at, and I agree with everything you said about a policy, we shouldn't have to do that, but there's going to be someone else sitting in this chair in another year or so, and we don't know what the outcome of that will be, you know?
And I understand that, and just in deference to the superintendent, I don't believe that the superintendent said no to this. I, you know, from what I've been informed, the superintendent said, the committee made a decision, and I'm supporting the decision of the committee. And at the time, that, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Malvi, is that not accurate, that the...
That's correct.
You were just following past practice of the committee?
That's correct.
Had made a, had made a decision?
That's correct.
And I went through our policy manual, and it's a very lengthy one, I've been through it a few times, but I'm not aware, I did not see a policy in there regarding this. Do you know if that's accurate, Dr. Malvi?
I think you're correct on that.
I just didn't see it, it doesn't mean, I certainly could have missed it, so that's why I was saying, Mr. Chairman, that I just felt that a policy was just a little overboard. You know, you can policy ourselves to death, as you can see from that policy manual. It's pretty involved, and most of the policies in there, in that manual, refer to state law. And just for those folks that are listening, watching, and whatnot, that policy manual is... is posted on the front page of our website. And for those of you who want to print it, just be aware, it's three hundred and some odd pages before you hit print. So.
So, Mr. Superintendent, at this point, we'll leave it, waiting for a report.
Right. I'd like just a comment on it in terms of the process. It, it's really not a policy issue, but there are always gray lines, if you will, of, you know, how a committee gets involved. But to the point, technically, it's not a policy issue, but also technically, the committee does have a right to weigh in on it and make a vote. And depending on who's sitting on the committee, this could bounce back and forth for the next fifty years. So, you know, I don't think you're doing any harm by putting your heart where your belief is on this issue. But let me make it very clear that once the decision is made and Ted Malvi is no longer here and another superintendent comes in or another one after that, that individual does not have the right, nor the authority, legal authority, to change that unless it comes back for action by the school committee. And if it so happens, and, and I'll be long gone, give me a phone call. And I'll walk you through what the process is. There's a right way, there's a wrong way. And I hope if there's anything that I made clear coming into the district and how I operate in my style, I'm very definite about roles and responsibilities and chain of command and how things get done. It's not a case of me having to get my way or the staff get their way. There's, there's a proper way that we operate in this business. And I, I hope we can build on that as we go through my time here. But ultimately, decisions that are made, superintendents just can't come in and brush them to the side. There's a process that needs to be followed.
And hopefully, Mr. Chairman, this committee will take those responsibilities on because according to the policies, the committee is supposed to be reviewing these every couple of years for updates and for changes and to eliminate policies that are no longer effective and stuff. So, I'm looking forward to the committee taking that responsibility and doing that in the future. Okay, the next item on the agenda, sorry, Kurt?
Was a motion made second? Was a motion made second to take a?
There was not, was there? I thought Vinnie mentioned that he wanted to refer it to administration, but I didn't. Do we? I stand corrected.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to refer it to the superintendent. Is there a second? Second by Kurt. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Still voted? Thank you, Martha. Okay, next item on the agenda under new business, superintendent overview, second half of the year. You may have given us most of that already, but.
I'll try to be brief on it. Well, if you think the first six months was, were exciting, put your seatbelt on because we're into the second part of the year. And, and I'm going to go through these rather quickly, but the, the items that are going to take our attention and time and effort and understanding and cooperative approach to the issues are the following. The FY fourteen budget will continue to be monitored very, very closely. Julie reported out about the, the new change in the revenue. I talked about the liabilities. We have to watch that on a daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly basis. And, and none of us are going to rest easy until we get to the fourth quarter and the end of June. So, FY fourteen budget. We're also looking at any which way we can shake out more funds from the, the state. One thing that is available around about this time of the year is potential grant money through what's called pothole funds. And you know what a pothole is out on the road? You need to fix it and usually it's some emergency situation. Well, the state, for a number of years, has had this program for pothole funds where we can apply for. I can't think of a better district than the situation that they're in than, than us. So, we're going to give it a, a run. Doesn't mean that it's going to be a guarantee, but we can go in with our Kleenex boxes and plead our case, see if we can get something out of them. Second item is the potential liabilities, without question. I think we've collectively with the Teachers Association and the school committee made a substantial dent in those potential liabilities because of the grievances and arbitrations, but we need to continue to monitor all other areas. We had expenses because of the district-wide meeting. We have potential expenses because of special education and some other legal issues that had been pending in the district but never had been brought to the table actively. And all of a sudden, they're resurrecting themselves. The third area is the DSAC report. As the DSAC folks come out and roll out the report, we're already well into it, but I'm going to try to get that ramped up by their participation. And we're going to be requesting and applying for further grant money from them. They don't come into a district and, and simply write the check and say, here, we're here to help. If they see that the district is willing to pull themselves up by the bootstraps, then they may be more amenable to the application process and the grants. And our, our folks that are working on this are doing a great job trying to identify various areas. The fourth area is negotiations. Without question, negotiations will be a huge, huge issue this year. It is with the Teachers Association for a full-term contract. And we also have to finish up the evaluation instrument component, the new evaluation that has been left on hold, if you will. But I've already begun the conversations with the Teachers Association on that. Through their efforts, they've been able to gather the previous material much quicker than I could locate it in the office. But we're going to be fast-forwarding that to try to get that accomplished sooner than the larger piece, which is the, the full-blown contract. But that's going to be tremendously time-consuming for the committee. The fifth area is what we call CPR review. Stands for the Consolidated Program Review. And that's dealing with all our special education services, pupil personnel services. It is very, very, very intensive. They are expected to come out in the second half of the year. Karen Zaleski and her staff are already gearing up for that. We're reaching out to some professional assistants to try to get our house in order. But I will guarantee to you, if you think the DSAC report was involved, this really gets ramped up probably tenfold. But we'll be moving forward on that in the latter springtime. Karen, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. The sixth area is dealing, it's an item coming up on your superintendent's search, on the status of your superintendent position, what the flavor of the committee is, whether to maintain my services or go out on a search or wait a few months and then go out. That'll come up under the next item. But without question, time is upon you. You have six months left in this year, so some decisions are going to have to be made one way or another, what the future holds for whoever holds this position as superintendent. And last but not least, is the seventh item, is the FY fifteen budget. We're already into it administratively. I believe Julie passed out a draft calendar to you. For the public, we'll put that on our website. Typically, this process has begun much, much earlier in the year, but this is not typical, what we've all gone through. Just getting a budget resolved in the first part of December, ultimate reductions to balance that had to be made by the school committee. But we're going to fast-track the FY fifteen budget. So, we've put out a tentative calendar and I'll just run through it quickly, that all school budgets are due by the end of this week, weekend in January ten. Special education and facilities by the end of week, January seventeen. District-wide and technology by week ending January twenty-four. A first budget draft by January thirty-one. School committee review, tentatively from February three through the twenty-eighth. Public hearing, tentatively March seven. Budget adoption, March fourteen. Spencertown meeting, May one. We're not sure of the East Brookfield town meeting. And typically what happens is, based on the law, we work backward, if you will. That is, whenever the town meeting is established in whichever town has their first town meeting, we go back forty-five days where the committee will have to make a decision. And then we plug in these other areas, which is a standard budget calendar. All right? Now, now again, when I say normally, typically, this would have happened much earlier. This is atypical. We don't have a lot of room to grow. We don't have a lot of revenue at our doorstep, so to speak. So, we'll be able to handle it, I think, much more expeditiously. I don't want to say quickly because I don't want people to think that we're giving it, you know, a short shrift. But we have struggled through this FY fourteen budget process. I, I think we fairly well exposed things that should, as we have the second go at it with FY fifteen, should be readily available and understood by everyone. And we don't have a lot of money to plug into areas. So, we'll probably be as shot with money as we ended up with on FY fifteen. But we'll still give it the due diligence. Okay? So, that's where we're heading with the FY fifteen budget. And those seven items will be on the front burner throughout the next six months. We're into the six months.
Next item on the agenda is superintendent's search request by Mr. King.
Yeah, I was just under the impression at the time when I made the motion that it was a year-to-year contract. Mr. Cludier sent me the contract, so it was a two-year contract. So, you can take that off the table.
Well, there's, there's a little clarification on that with respect that there has to be an application for another waiver.
Right.
For Mr. Malvi to be able to stay. So, therein lies the rub that this committee is going to be faced with because we don't know what the reaction of the state is going to be. If and when we decide if we want Dr. Malvi to apply for another waiver, what if the state says, well, what action have you taken and what have you done to try to go out and, and retain a permanent superintendent? If we choose not to go forward, do we just say we, we haven't done anything? We've decided to stay with Dr. Malvi? And then you filter in the timeframe of all this. It's probably the worst possible time in the world to try to start this process. Because as Ted had said, we're already into January. By the time this committee decides where we want to go, we'll be looking at another couple of months before we have anything out there, you know? But I, I, I guess, I think the thing to do is, is, is for the committee, for us to contact Christine Lynch and, and let us as a committee plead our case as to where we are and the problems that we've come up with and on behalf of Dr. Malvi and inquire as to, see if we can take the temperature as to where they are and whether we could get a favorable answer from them so that we don't end up finding out in May that they're not going to grant a waiver, which would leave us really high and dry, you know? So.
Is there a deadline that we know of for the waiver to be accepted or denied?
I, I'm not sure. Do you know if there is?
There's not a deadline per se, but the waiver that I'm currently operating under is for the school year. So, it would end at the end of, I don't know whether it's June thirty or June thirty-one, unless another waiver was in the offing. So, there's no deadline to say you need to have it in by, you know, January thirtieth, February thirtieth. But it behooves any district to get the process going because you may not get a quick answer as I'm waiting for the commissioner now. So, it's, it's probably behooves the committee to move forward on it. Or, in the alternative, if you do want to go out for your search, I've had some, you know, private conversations that I've told folks that it is anywhere from a six to nine month process to do it correctly. So, anywhere along the line here, if we look at the calendar year, January to December, if the committee was so inclined to go that way. And, you know, I'm, I'm very comfortable moving forward for the remainder of this year, but at some point, if you wanted to go out and start the process three, four months down the road, then, you know, we can ratchet that forward. Still have to have a waiver from the commissioner. I personally think that that would be acceptable to them, that they're showing that, well, okay, there's stability in the district now. You're in a better position to go out and bring in a superintendent on a longer-term basis. And it makes sense to keep the current individual on until you're ready to pass the baton. It's up to the committee. It's up to the committee. But there's no specific deadline to say you have to have it in by, you know, June one or you won't get an answer.
So, the earlier you put it in or submit it, the quicker we get an answer back?
I, I.
Thank you.
What I would like to suggest to the committee is if the committee would be interested in taking a vote to have the chair contact Christine Lynch on behalf of the committee, put our case forward to them and see what the, see what the likelihood is of getting a waiver granted. And I, I suggest that in, in exchange, instead of having the superintendent trying to advocate for himself and explain to them why he thinks he should be able to stay here, I think it would be much more effective for us as a school committee to explain to them, this is where we're at and this is what we're asking for.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
I, I agree. And I'll make that in a form of a motion.
Okay, motion made by Vinnie. Any second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris.
Mr. Chairman.
Discussion, go ahead.
I, I did have a conversation with the superintendent about this particular issue. We, we entered into that two-year contract with him knowing full well we would have to get a second-year waiver. And, and I spoke to him about it a few weeks back, simply because I knew Mr. King had put it on the agenda or had requested for it to be on the agenda tonight. And I wanted to have our ducks somewhat in a row. You know, in my conversations with Dr. Malvi, he indicated, you know, it's just, and I, I won't speak, this is not verbatim, but pretty close, the state would be foolish, you know, not to grant a waiver and, and to, to make sure that we do have some stability in the district. You know, and I, and I said, look, it's, it's real simple. Not everybody's going to like everything that Ted Malvi has done or will do.
I don't know why.
And, and I knew you would not.
That's the first I've heard of that.
And I'm sure it is. But, but overall, he has brought some stability to the district in my eyes.
Yep.
As, as one member here. And I think that he's done a, a good job in, in very uncertain circumstances, set of circumstances. This is historical circumstances for this district. So, I think that, you know, and I, and then I went on further and asked him, when would be the best time to go out for that search? And, and he indicated it would really, we really should look at starting it in, in the early fall, you know, in that July, August, September type timeframe. Late summer, early fall, with the intent of, if he got his waiver, that by the time you, you set up a committee, by the time you go through all of the processes, both in the, the pre-screening, the screening, and then the, obviously, the finalists and the, the site reviews and, and alike, you know, we'll be in March, April. And, you know, we get that person to come on board, you know, towards that May timeframe where he, he gets to spend maybe a month, a couple of weeks with our, our current superintendent to kind of say, look, this is where we came from, this is where we are, this is where we're headed, and here are the reins, so to speak. I think that that's a, you know, rough draft, pretty good plan. So, I certainly support that. I, I did ask Ted if there's, you know, if their state is so inclined to, you know, give us an indication whether this waiver, because, because I don't want to get caught shortsighted either. I don't want to get, you know, find out it's, it's May and, oh, by the way, we're not renewing that waiver.
Yeah, and just know that was the only reason I had asked to get it put on.
Absolutely. I, I absolutely know that.
Of, you know, what I thought of Ted's job.
So, I, I don't want to get caught that way either. So, I do think it's a better idea for, for, for the chairman to contact the state directly. And as opposed to Dr. Malvi trying to, as you suggested, advocate for himself. And on behalf of the district, let's see if we can't get that either extended, renewed, so that we have some certainty and some stability throughout this district.
Okay. What I would like to add to your motion, Mr. Cludier, is that I would do a rough draft and get it out to all the members. And if any members have any suggestions or any areas of interest that they want included in the letter, to contact me and, and let me know. So, we get a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The next item on the agenda is teacher evaluations. That has been put on the agenda by myself. I have been asking about this since I've been on the committee and I understand the complications that have, that have taken place over discussions as to whether we had a tool or not and how we're going to go about it. But the day has come that this now gets taken care of. And it's been cited in the DSAC report. It's been made very clear that this is an issue that they want addressed and they want settled immediately rather than later. So, I've pretty much run out my patience on this. So, I've pretty much run out my patience on this. I'm tired of hearing about talking about it, and it's time that we take some action and get this thing done, and get it over with, so we can come in compliance and doing what we're supposed to be doing. That's just my own personal point. Entertain any other comments by any members.
Mr. Chairman, I, when I got on the committee back in May, I was put on this, this committee to, you know, work this through. Of course, we didn't have a, a leader at the helm. Dr. Malvey was not here at the time, and of course, you know, when you're stomping out fires all day-
Right.
-it's, it's tough to get progress in other areas. But I agree with you. I think that his comments this evening, Dr. Malvey's comments, excuse me, this evening, indicate that we're gonna get that moving forward post haste, and, and, and I'm certainly as one of the members of that committee to negotiate, willing to get together and get it done.
Yeah.
So.
And, and my comments, no reflection in what has happened in regards to the superintendent handling this, we've had, as you said, many fires to put out, but I think this now rises to the top of the milk, that it's gotta be one of those top-three priorities of the next things that we're gonna be working on. Okay, next issue on the agenda, item D, personnel information. Y'all have a copy in your packet, personnel changes.
I have no comment on it. That's standard material that comes out at every meeting.
Any questions from any members of the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Kurt?
I just, as Dr. Malvey, that our teacher, is, is that a vacancy?
Yes, it was.
So, that was?
That, that was. We were filling it on a substitute basis. I see Mrs. Blaki correcting me on that, yes. And then, we, pending what we were gonna end up with the budget, and whether we were gonna have art at all. So, now, we've been able to move the individual forward with an appointment.
Okay.
But it was always an existing position.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cludier.
Through you to the business administrator. Julie, is that encumbered, and is that part of the balance of 1.4, 1.392?
Yes, she is encumbered.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next item on the agenda, item E, enrollments. You have a copy of the enrollments in your packet. Any comment by the superintendent, or any questions by committee members?
No, purely informational.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna note that the total enrollment is 1832. I think it's, well, it has gone down, but 1832 is the enrollment figure.
Yep. Next item is school letters, newsletters. You have them all in your packet, and have been given some of them tonight, and they've also been on the website as well. I know these, they get kinda just rushed over every month, but the principals of all the schools really do a, a pretty nice job with the newsletters that they put out, and if you take the time to really look at them, there's a lot of good things going on in, in all of the schools, so we appreciate that information from all of yous. Next item is hearing for visitors. Any comments from any visitors that would like to have anything? No, have any? Okay. School committee comments and future agenda topics.
Mr. Chairman?
Kurt?
I just, I just wanna, I just wanna ask you for pointed clarification. I think on the financial report, we have to take a vote on that approval for expense report, like the preceding second tax report approval. I think we always took a vote. Is that right?
I think it does, although we usually have to, because it's a, it's a, at times when we count, so I'm not sure.
Well, I think in the past, we did take a vote. Is that right?
It has been done, yes, but at times it hasn't been asked, and so I'm not sure.
I'll tell you, it's, procedurally, it's not a requirement.
Right, it's a budget.
I mean, you know, we are what we are. We're gonna go forward, but it's not absolutely necessary.
I would say if there's transfers, we have to approve those.
True.
Short of transfers, though, I would say the budget's the budget, and, you know, I think it's there for discussion, information.
I forgot about the transfers, right.
But, but I don't believe I saw transfers.
There are, there wasn't a sheet of transfers. They're like so minimal, but somewhere in here, if you look back, you can-
Yeah, I thought it was in the first few pages.
Yeah, like-
If there are transfers, let's, let's entertain a motion for-
They're minimal transfers, but there are a couple.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, there is transfers in there, and I would make a motion that we approve the expense report.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All so voted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Kurt?
I continue. I, I just wanna bring up what Mr. Parsons said earlier. This is the time to talk about it. So, I, I would like to ask the superintendent to give us a report next month on that $27 fee for, for taking CPR, and why it costs $27 and not $7, like Mr. Parsons said. I, I think that's an expense for the, for the person, if it isn't necessary to spend an extra $20, and, and I think that's something we, we should, we should address.
Okay. Anything else, Kurt?
Oh, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Cludier?
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, if that could be a motion and a second and a vote-
I'll make that a motion.
Administration.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Kurt to refer to administration of CPR report, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Cludier. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Chairman, under discussion?
Yep.
I'd just like to make sure, okay, I'm concerned about the 27 versus the 7, but we're referring it. I, I'd really like to just refer the whole thing to him. Mr. Parsons, I, I took quite a few notes here, brought up a lot of different issues, and, and I'd just like the superintendent to come back to us with a complete report as to what he finds out. You know, I mean, I gotta believe that if, if we're having a 10-week, 90-minute-a-day, as he said, five days a week, 10, for 10 weeks course, that we've gotta be educating the students. And, and if they're watching movies, I, I agree that it's not educating the students, but I'm not an edu, you know, I'm not gonna second-guess what's going on. I'd just rather refer the whole thing as an entirety to the superintendent for a report back.
Okay. All right, that, that's the way the motion will be read, Martha?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. It's fine.
Okay. All right, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All so voted. Anything else, sir?
I have nothing.
Mr. King, any?
I think the only thing, just to personally thank, you know, John Howard for his service and everything that he did. We appreciated his help when he was served.
Is there a request for executive session?
Chairman?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Vinnie?
We should take the time to, you know, ask the administration to draft a letter to John, thanking him for his services as well, and send that off.
Okay, motion. Motion made by Mr. Cludier to send a letter of thanks to Mr. Howard, seconded-
Seconded.
-by Mr. King. Any other discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Okay, at this point, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. We have a motion?
Motion.